To just thank everybody for being here today, both in person and virtually. For this meeting, since I'm virtual, I wanted to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair to lead the meeting today. So Vice Chair, I'm gonna give you the stick to take the meeting over today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Sweeney. Okay, so I guess let's go ahead and get started and we'll go on record now. Are we already recording, Ms. Jones? Okay, great. Let's go ahead and start with the first agenda item, a roll call.
Good morning, and again, thank you, everyone, for your patience. Member Bitzer, are you present?
I am present.
Member Ely?
Present.
Member Garcia?
Here.
Member Honker?
Present.
Chair Sweeney?
Present.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Present.
All are present, and thank you again for remembering to pull the microphone towards you and to speak directly into it.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of the September 27, 2024 Agenda. I was just going to note right away, we do have one item on the agenda that has been removed last minute. It's Item Number 10, the Litigation Update, that is going to come to us at a later time. Are there any other issues or questions about the agenda?
I'll move approval of the agenda minus Item Number 10.
I'll second.
Great, we got a second by Member Honker. Pam, you want to go ahead and do a roll call on that? Or vote?
Yes, to approve the amended agenda. Member Bitzer, your vote?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next is the approval of the July 27, 2024 Regular Meeting Minutes. I'll open it up to the board if there's any any comments or issues with the minutes.
Yes, Vice Chair, I just I just noticed, I think it's a problem with the agenda, because the minutes say July 26, not July 27. So I believe July 26 is accurate. Just checking with Ms. Jones.
You are right, Member Honker, the meeting was on the 26th, so the minutes are correct. The agenda says July 27, it should say July 26.
Thank you, Member Honker, I always appreciate your attention to detail. So, thank you for catching that. Any issues with, any other issues with the minutes? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I will move, we approve the minutes to the July 26, 2024 meeting, as presented to us.
A second?
Thank you, Member Garcia, for that second, and we'll go ahead and have a vote on that.
Member Bitzer, your vote?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
I've stayed, since I was not here for that meeting.
Thank you. Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes, with one abstention.
Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is EIB 2449, Petition for the Adoption of the Regional Haze State Implementation Plan Revision and New Rule Regional Haze Requirements.
Vice Chair, excuse me, Chair Sweeney has her hand up. Yes?
We missed public comment?
Oh, thank you very much, I apologize. Let's go ahead and back up real quick. I just first like to say, thank you, Member Chair Sweeney, for turning this over to me, but you put a lot of work into this, and I I just want to say thank you. Okay, let's back up, public comment. Ms. Jones, did we have anybody sign up for public?
No one has reached out to me, Vice Chair, to make public comment. You might hold the room and see if there's anyone here.
Is there anyone in the room or online that would like to make a public statement at this time? If you are online, go ahead and raise your hand in the platform function, so that Ms. Jones can see you.
I'm unable to raise my hand, I'm sorry.
Are you calling in? Are you the call-in user?
I'm a call-in user.
And you, is that Mr. Maxwell?
Yes, this is Mr. Maxwell, I'd like to make a public comment.
One moment, Mr. Maxwell, is there anybody in the room, just raise your hand if you're here to make public comment as well? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Maxwell.
Good morning. This meeting is being held in violation of the Open Meetings Act of New Mexico. The Open Meetings Act includes a deadline for a meeting agenda to be posted on a public body's website at least 72 hours prior to the meeting. In this case, an agenda was not available by the deadline, and was not posted until 1:55 PM on Monday, being at roughly 67 hours prior to the meeting. I've done the math, the agenda was posted nearly five hours past the deadline. Upon discovery, I contacted Board Counsel, Ms. Padilla, about the absence of the agenda, noting how the Open Meetings Act requires compliance with this 72-hour deadline, and informing her of my wish for the meeting to be rescheduled to a time when the requirements of the Open Meetings Act could be fulfilled. But instead, your counsel decided that posting the agenda past the deadline is lawful, because it is, as she states, substantially compliant with the Open Meetings Act. To defend her idea, she cites a recorded Supreme Court case known as Gutierrez for the basis of missed deadlines being lawful. This is in gross error. The Gutierrez case had nothing to do about missed deadlines, but was specific whether a public body had violated the Open Meetings Act by closing off access to a room at max occupancy, where the local public body had provided other forms of access to members of the public. Unfortunately for your counsel, clear lines cannot be drawn between the existing scenario of this board's untimely posting of its agenda and the Gutierrez case. In over a decade of watching Public Bodies for Open Meetings Act compliance, I have never witnessed such incredible disrespect for our sunshine laws, as brazen and as wanton as has been made by your counsel. There is no city in this state, no county, no school district, there are no public bodies, local or state, period, I have ever seen that would have dared to hold their public meeting after missing their agenda deadline by almost five hours. Rather than rescheduling this meeting, which could have been held on Monday as a special meeting, and complied with the 72-hour deadline, counsel for this board has made it clear that this meeting is too important to miss. Let it be known to each person present, no action taken at this meeting today can be held as valid because the requirements of NMSA 1978, Section 10151, have not been met. Nobody is above the law in New Mexico. The Opening Meetings Act is foundational to our form of government and must be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell, your comment was duly noted.
I was having a comment online. So I keep getting muted, but I was trying to raise my hand, I don't know if it's actually worked, I was having difficulty.
Yes, we see you, and you may speak.
Thank you. My name is Andrea La Cruz Crawford, thank you for having me today. I'm actually here with regard to Agenda Item Six. I just actually had a question. I am the attorney for the Aseca de Alto y los Martinez, and we have the administrative appeal on a permit that was issued in August, and just wanted to see if there would be opportunity to speak during Item Number Six, or if that will just be scheduling, or if any action is planned to be taken on that item today.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Yes, you will have an opportunity to make a statement when we get to that agenda item. We will go ahead and ask you at that time if there's anything you'd like to add. So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, does not appear that there are any other public comments at this time. So now, we will go ahead and move on to Item Number Five, the EIB 24-49, Petition for the Adoption of the Regional Haze State Implementation Plan Revision and New Rule Regional Haze Requirements. I believe we have Mr. B. Hill and Mr. Hirsch, thank you, here to discuss the topic for us. So go ahead and turn it over to you now.
Hi, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and honorable members of the board. This is Josh Hirsch and Chris B. Hill on behalf of the New Mexico Environment Department. Today, we would like to ask or request a hearing date for the matter. Excuse me for not having a more eloquent title. Adoption of the Regional Haze State Implementation Plan Revision and New Rule Regional Haze Requirements. This is a rule that's required to be passed in order to be compliant with federal Clean Air Act guidelines, and so we would like to get the meeting scheduled, or the hearing scheduled in December, if possible. The department would be requesting a December 16, the week of December 16 hearing day, if that's possible. And the alternative, the department would like to request the week of December 9.
Madam Vice Chair, I would just note that the rules require that 15 days lapse between the filing of the petition and the date that the board can set the hearing, so that is today, the September 27 is 15 days following the filing. And then per 20.1.1.301 NMAC, the board quote, shall determine at a public meeting, after we've received the petition, whether or not to hold a public hearing on the proposal. And I would also note that the rules also state that any person may respond to the petition, either in writing prior to the public meeting, or in person at the public meeting.
Okay, does the board have any questions for the petitioners?
Madam Vice Chair, may I, so I read in the petition, you're anticipating a three-day hearing? Is that correct?
Yes, we anticipate approximately three days, with one extra day for deliberation by the EIB. It's unclear exactly how many days the hearing will take, just based on engagement by other interested members, other stakeholders.
And there is the possibility that if we have other parties that enter an appearance, that we would try to enter into discussions with them to consolidate their concerns, or maybe even come to some kind of a stipulation about, you know, how we move forward. So those are discussions that are happening, there are stakeholders that we're in contact with, but you know, I think for now, three days would be fine. If we had stipulations, it could even be a day, I mean, we're not quite sure yet.
Member Garcia?
Thank you, and as always, we ask petitioners, is this controversial? Do you anticipate a lot of pushback?
There's the possibility that this is a controversial hearing, it affects oil and gas producers in the state of New Mexico, and is affecting some of their emissions rates, and so it's possible that the hearing will be controversial.
And the controversies are highly technical. You know, they involve discussions of, you know, different types of equipment, the cost of equipment, and calculations of costs of replacements of equipment. It should be fun.
Got it, thank you. Member Ely?
Yes, if I may. And so the request is to also deliberate right after the hearing, is that correct?
You know, I don't think that we as I'm sitting here now, I think that, you know, the board would likely want to sit on this and understand it, this is not I mean, it makes my head spin, so, you know, and I've been working on it for a while, so I think that it's something that you know, you're going to need to think about, read, consider, it's my view. I didn't quite hear what Josh said, but our clients are also requesting that Felicia Orth be, as someone who's highly experienced, be assigned as hearing officer, you know, if you're open to it, and if she's available.
I just, yeah, so there's no imminent deadline that you have to meet that would cause a deliberation immediately after the hearing?
Member Bitzer?
I would tend to concur that we're going to want a hearing officer, and I've been happy with Felicia Orth asked, so I'd be happy with that if we need a motion.
Thank you, Member Bitzer, we'll note that. And Member Honker?
Yeah, a couple of things. On the deadline issue, seems to be, my reading of it was the deadline for making a decision was like three years ago, so I'm guessing that means there's not a pressing deadline at this point, other than catching up with this.
Chair Sweeney, did you have any questions?
Um, no, but I think Member Honker's question wasn't answered.
I apologize, I thought Member Honker was just making a statement. Is that correct? There is no?
Well, I was just looking for verification that the deadline's been missed, so it's just a question of how long after the deadline are we going to take an action? So it's just looking to NMD for a verification on that, and also I noticed that it said this will not apply in the Albuquerque-Bernaleo County area, and, but it doesn't look like this is a joint action with the Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Board, so I'm just also looking for verification that this would be our action on its own, and not a joint hearing in action with the Albuquerque Board.
Thank you for those comments, Member Honker. First, you are correct, yes, NBD currently, the state, I should say, is currently out of compliance with EPA guidelines on the submission of the second revision to the State Implementation Plan. That being the case, we hope to get it submitted as expeditiously as possible. Part of that process involves passing it through our Environmental Improvement Board, to then submit the plan that's been approved by you all to the EPA, and that will go through its own regulatory process at the federal level. So we hope to do this portion of it as quickly as possible. In relation to that, Albuquerque-Bernaleo Environmental Department has also been doing their similar process independently, at the point, I believe that they're at the point where they've now petitioned their board and gone through the hearing process for their portion of the plan, because they have local jurisdiction over Bernaleo County. So once the department's plan and the Bernaleo County's plan are both submitted and passed through, there will then be an opportunity for us to work in tandem to submit a total plan, a state implementation plan, to the Environmental Protection Agency.
Member Honker, did you have any other questions?
No, no, that clarifies, thanks.
Thank you. Members, or Chair Sweeney?
No questions at this point, maybe just comment that if we could discuss timing and see if Ms. Orth, what her schedule looks like, if that can be done.
That Vice Chair, Pam Jones, our administrator, is indicating that Ms. Orth is available on either of those weeks, Ms. Jones?
Yes, at this point, she is.
Just a calendar note from my standpoint, this is Member Honker. I am going to be out of town the 10th through 13th of December, and due to the nature of the trip I have, it would be difficult for me to participate in the hearing that week, so I would prefer the the original proposal of NMD, which would be the week of December 16, just for my own personal schedule.
Okay, I only have one question, it was just a follow-up to, I believe, Member Ely's questions. If you are anticipating any pushback from stakeholders on this issue, is three days enough? And I ask mostly because we use a court reporter, and so we want to make sure people are available at that time, so just want to make sure our timing is correct.
I think now, yes, you know, and it's not clear how the parties might divide up their arguments, how they might align, or, you know, if they enter at all, if we resolve it, so at this point, I think three days is an easier lift than, you know, at that time of year, rather than having people give up five days. We will reach out and try to ascertain where the parties are at with regard to this, and we'll get back with counsel as soon as we can. As soon as we get something reportable, we'll get back to Ms. Padilla.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I'm just going to go ahead and open it up if there's any public comment on this agenda item, either online or in the room. Okay, no public comment. Entertain a motion if we're ready. Member Garcia?
Thank you, Chair, or Vice Chair Trujillo. So if we're looking at the week of the 6th, December 16, and three days needed, perhaps December 18 through the 20th would be the days, so I would move that we hold a hearing for EIB 24-49 on December 18, to be continued as long as necessary with Felicia Orth as the hearing officer.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Member Bitzer. I'm going to turn to our counsel right now to make sure that that included all the information we needed.
Yes, I believe so, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jones, if you wouldn't mind taking a vote for us?
I will. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, moving on to the next topic, we will be discussing EIB 24-51, Aseca de Alto y los Martinez, and Rowan Stanlin versus PG Enterprises LLC, Notice of Appeal and Request for Hearing. I believe we have Andrea La Cruz Crawford, the attorney. Oh, oh, sorry, one moment. Yes, Chair Sweeney?
Yes, Vice Chair, I just wanted to make a note, I will need to recuse myself for this agenda item, as well as Agenda Item EIB 2452. The reason is I do some work to support some of the Asecas affected by Hermits Peak Calf Canyon. So I just want clarity in that, and so I will be recusing myself for those two agenda items.
Thank you, Chair Sweeney, for going ahead and putting that on record for us as well. So I'm going to turn it over right now to
Madam Vice Chair, excuse me, Member Honker wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Member Honker, I didn't see up there.
Yeah, just a question, so are 24-51 and 24-52 regarding the same permit?
Yes, sir, they are, and we are going to get to that particular issue in shortly.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, that was my reading of it, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, you are correct, they are over the same permit. Okay, so Ms. Crawford, would you like to go ahead and make a statement at this time?
Yes, so first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for having me today, Honorable Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm appearing on behalf of the Aseca de Alto y los Martinez in order to request a hearing on our appeal of the permits submitted by PG Enterprises. And so what I'd like to do is see if we could just get a hearing actually set. And I'd like to request, I think two hours should be more than sufficient to address the arguments that are contained in the appeal, and based on the fact that there is, I believe, only three objectors to this particular proceeding. That said, if you are not going to grant that application, and I need to make actual arguments here, I will, I am prepared to do so, but I do not want to waste your time if you are in agreement that we can set a separate hearing to address the contentions contained in our notice of appeal.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford, and historically, we have asked petitioners to just summarize their what they have submitted, just for the benefit of the board members and the public listening in. So if you'd like to go ahead and do that, that'd be great.
Sure, okay, so on, I'll just take about two or three minutes of your time here. So on May 20 of 2020, the permit to PG Enterprises was issued a regular new source review permit by the Bureau for
Objection, objection, is she testifying? I'm unclear, we're here to set a hearing, we have not submitted our answer yet. The board has received the petitions, they can read the petitions. It sounds to me like she's giving an opening statement, and I just, I want to file my objection. It sounds to me like she's giving a opening statement, um, and I just, I want to file my objection here.
Um, Madam Vice Chair, I suggested actually that the, uh, appellant be offered an opportunity just to summarize the petition for the benefit of the board. So Ms. Ms. Crawford, if you would just stick to what you have actually stated in your appeal, just so that the board can evaluate, um, uh, the petition and whether they, and to inform their decision about whether to, um, whether to set a hearing.
And then, uh, then we request, because she's an advocate, and, uh, we are going to assume she's not going to be giving a platonic, um, you know, completely independent, uh, uh, fact, uh, set of facts without her particular, uh, point of view, which is fine. We request the, uh, opportunity to respond.
Uh, Mr. V Hill, you will have an opportunity to respond, um, and that, as soon as she's done. And we did, uh, receive her, um, statement that she submitted. We just asked that she basically give summary. Thank you.
All right, so I will just start off by saying that, um, this originally, um, originally on May 20th, 2020, permitee PG Enterprises was issued a regular new source review permit by the Bureau for a facility located in Rio Rancho, New Mexico. Um, subsequently on or about August 1st of 2024, the permittees filed a NSR permit relocation application to the Bureau, um, which sought to move the location of the permit to Mora County, New Mexico, in a small town, um, of, of Cleveland. Um, the Asequia and Stanland have submitted letters of objection and requests for information and response to the application. Um, and the Asequia has, uh, legal standing as well because it holds an easement, uh, through the site located within five feet of the actual location of mining in the proposed location for the, the crusher. Um, also, um, on August 16th of 2024, the board granted the application despite receipt of objections. Um, we're, again, we're requesting a two-hour hearing to address the following concerns, which were outlined in our notice of appeal. Um, notice of the, and I'll just, I will just hit on the big topics, um, just to be fair, um, since there has not been a response that's been filed yet. Um, first of all, we feel that the notice of the application for the relocation permit was not provided in a minute, uh, in a manner that would reasonably apprise the public of the existence of the application and fails to adhere to procedural standards for due process because it did not provide the public with 30 days from the date of the permit application was filed to submit written objections. Um, second, we assert that the Bureau has misinterpreted the provisions of the regular NSR permit and the relocation protocols. Um, and, um, our appeal also outlines how the application for the relocation permit contains errors regarding the facility location and failed to meet other setback requirements from occupied structures and the community of Cleveland. Um, specifically, uh, one of our major contentions is that the NS, the regular NSR permit defines the plant as the perimeter of the area of operations, including all disturbed lands, including mining and overburden removal areas used for the job. The spec, the setback requirement should be measured from the outer boundary of the plant and facility operations, not from a center point, as was done here. And we note that in the, in that definition, the annex, um, the facility annex for mining is only a few yards from the fence line of the nearest neighboring-
Objection, this is-
Topperdoners residence.
This is testimony. She's, she's entering facts into the record, she's not a witness, we object.
Madam Vice Chair, no, your objection's noted, but, uh, this is not an evidentiary hearing. This is just a public meeting to discuss the filing of the appeal, so.
She's speaking to a tribunal of decision-makers. The people who will be making the decisions, she's entering evidence into your minds, we object.
Madam Vice Chair, no, the objection's noted. Ms. Ms. Crawford, I think, I think that's sufficient. Um, is Mr. Stanland, uh, here also?
I'm here, uh, my name is Rowan Stanland.
I'm, I apologize, okay, but thank you very much. And you are jointly, you jointly filed the petition with, uh, Ms. Crawford, who's representing the Asequia, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Crawford, do you want to finish summarizing up your, your statement?
Yeah, and I, I, I won't say anything more, I'll just say that the, we don't, we dispute that the, the 67-meter setback requirements have been met. Um, our appeal, um, also, um, asks for the, in, the department, um, to address the permit holistically and not ignore surface water standards and to consider the permitees' lack of proper site controllers required. Um, and also that it's failed to meet, uh, Title, uh, VI obligations in approving the permit. Um, I won't go into all of those arguments here, but I think that, um, with that, I can turn it over for, um, rebuttal.
I'm just gonna go ahead and note, I do see that the topics you addressed are in your filing.
Yes, they are, that's correct.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Stanland, did you have a statement you'd like to make?
Um, just to add, um, you know, one of the reasons why there are two appeals is because, um, Ms. Crawford is representing the Asequia, um, which is a very specific, um, set of information because the area of operations is deeply encroaching on their, um, on their ditch. So she is representing them, um, I am part of that, um, as well. Um, and then Dr. Sinclair is filing a separate appeal, um, on behalf of the community because there are many larger issues, um, at hand in this, um, operation being within the village, um, of Cleveland. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stanland. Okay, um, Mr. V Hill, you have an opportunity now to speak.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, both of the appeals are, um, uh, they have no legal merit, they have no factual merit. Um, and, uh, we will demonstrate that at the hearing, thank you. Um, and, and I would also say, we have a, a motion we'd like to enter at the appropriate time and to discuss how, um, how to move forward, given the posture of the case. It's my, my view, it's not really a problem, but it's, it seems a little premature, uh, to be asking for a hearing, but, but we're open to it. It's just that the, the answer has not been filed yet, which is, you know, again, we're, 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 it's procedurally, uh, you know, a little out of the ordinary, but it's, it, we're not gonna make an issue of it. And I, if, uh, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd also like to add, we have, we will probably have, um, dispositive motions to dismiss significant portions, if not all of this case. So it's, it may be, um, that this case never gets in front of you, but, but a hearing should be scheduled anyway.
Okay, uh, it seems like now is a good time to go ahead and address that the next item on the agenda is also the same topic. So if, is Ms. Sin- Oh, uh, Sinclair, thank you, thank you for just stepping right up here. Um, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, discuss if these two, uh, agenda items, uh, can be combined and we can address them as one issue. Uh, and, ye- yes, Mr. V Hill?
Well, I was gonna, I think the appropriate way is for one of the parties to move for that. And so, uh, I would, uh, the department moves to consolidate these matters, either under a single, uh, well, maybe not, uh, single heading, but we at least consolidate them into a single hearing. If, if there's no objection from the other parties, it would be helpful to combine them, uh, under a single heading, I guess, on the Docketed Matters website. It may, may, it may make that easier. I've noticed that there's two on there, but I'll leave that for, uh, Ms. Jones and the, and Board Counsel to decide, of course.
But before we, uh, I think for that suggestion, um, before we get to that, uh, there was an, uh, an issue that we wanted to just make sure we clarified on the, your standing, uh, with the filings that you, you had. So if you want to speak to that?
Uh, yes, um, I have been following the whole situation. I have been, um, submitting, um, my comments to every single permit with NMD. They've applied for a number of permits, GCP twos, this is the fourth permit, it's an NSR. Um, so I do believe I have standing to speak today. I am speaking on behalf of the community of Cleveland. We are over 300 people on our list. Um, many people are against the facility. Um, I live there, I've lived there 25 years. I actually rushed up here this morning, I'm bailing my field, gotta get my bales in this afternoon. Um, and I would really like you to have the opinion of someone that lives very close to this facility and has been following it very closely, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, I think we need to ask, um, uh, Ms. Sinclair, though, did, did you submit comments in this, uh, permit matter? In the, in this permit relocation matter, uh, uh, permit RE 058611? You did not?
Yes, I, yes, I submitted comments, and they're on the record.
They weren't, you did not attach them to your notice of appeal, though, correct?
I was not aware I had to attach my comments to my notice of appeal, sorry.
What I would suggest, uh, Madam Vice Chair, is, uh, subject to any objection, allowing, um, Ms. Sinclair to supplement her, um, her notice of appeal with, uh, uh, the, the comments that you submitted that would establish, because the standing requirement is that a person who participated in a permitting action before the department and who is adversely affected, then you may file a petition. And right now, as it stands, your petition doesn't establish that you participated in the permitting action before the department.
The department should have record that I participated in it. They would have the email records, the email records were also submitted by, um, Attorney Andrea Crawford.
Um, yes, but, Madam Chair, the, the, the notice, the standing requirements are placed on the petitioner. So that's why you, you, uh, the rules require that you, um, establish standing with your petition, which again is the standard that I had just read, if you want to consult the statute, it's 74-2-7H.
Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, you know, the, the rules, um, what they say is they should be construed liberally. Uh, it's our opinion, um, that, uh, we encourage members of the public to participate. Uh, the department, uh, has no problem with, uh, allowing, uh, this party to participate. I just want to go on the record saying that, and, uh, I don't, I, I don't, the department, I, the department, not me, sorry, the department, uh, really doesn't want to, uh, we don't want this matter to be adjudicated on the technicalities. I think we should get to the merits. I think members of the public and, and, and not pro se, non-represented parties should be able to enter and that we should construe these liberally. To the extent that the standing, uh, requirements were not met, you know, I understand that and, 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 uh, that decision will be what it is. Uh, we will waive our objections if that makes, if that gives anyone comfort. Um, but, you know, we can also dig in our, in our, um, comments and, and, and if there is a comment, then, you know, we're happy to supply that. Um, it, anyways, uh, I, I think you understand what I'm saying. We, i- it's our preference that we resolve this on the merits rather than on technicalities.
Ms. Sinclair, if you'd like to just submit supplementary, uh, evidence of your comments that you previously submitted on this permit, uh, we can, we can go ahead and take that.
So I would submit this after today, today?
Yes.
To Pam, Pam Jones?
Yes.
And what, do I give my statement now, would you like to hear it? Because I do provide a lot of community context.
Um, yes, and, again, we'd like to just keep it to a summary of what you submitted as a filing.
Is that, that's what it is, it is three points.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep it down, a few minutes.
Go ahead.
It's a very complex issue, I appreciate you hearing me today. Thank you. Yeah, I ju- I just want to set the context. As you know, we experienced a very serious wildfire, the HPCC fire in 2022, and it devastated our surrounding environment.
Um, objection, uh, this is a party that's entered. Um, are we taking testimony again?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm setting the context where this pit is located, and I will get to very specifics of my appeal.
Um, that's, that's fine. Um, so, uh, it's still testimony, whether it's contextual or, or however you want to characterize it. But I don't want to, and my dispute is not with you, my dispute is with the board. Um, where, I just, I want to go on, I will shut up after this, but I do want to, uh, file or just note our objection to any testimony. You know, we've done what we could to make it possible for this party to participate. We waived any objections. Um, we're not gonna waive an objection for, uh, t- testimony. Um, you know, uh, before the hearing even starts, the answer hasn't been filed. And like I said, we have motions to dismiss coming that probably will, uh, or, or has the likelihood that this case will never get before the board, but I'll, I'll stop here.
Thank you, Mr. V Hill, it's noted. Um, if, Ms. Sinclair, if you can keep it to what was the context of your filing with, with the board? I appreciate it.
Uh, I will, the context is absolutely connected to what I filed. We did suffer a wildfire. It has caused a great deal of trauma throughout our community, but most critically, it has shaped a new economic arrangements, widening the disparity of wealth between people due to FEMA payouts. The only reason we are here today is because of the Hermits Peak Calf Canyon fire. Just because a company wants to come in and capitalize on this situation should not negate the fact that it is a rural, residential, water-rich, unique,
Thank you, Ms. Sinclair.
historical, culturally intact minority and population, I'm getting on to it. It, I'm on, but this is the fourth permit the applicant has submitted for this location.
Ms. Sinclair, it needs to be part of what you submitted, and this is not-
Uh, it, it is adjacent to the Village of Cleveland by first point. And since the permit was submitted, an annex has opened up on the other side of the river and moves the facility into the village. Cleveland is not mentioned one single time in any of the four permit applications submitted by the applicant. Yet Cleveland has a zip code, a post office, a fire station, a playground, a water association, and is in a designated-
Thank you, Ms. Sinclair, we're just gonna go ahead and move on to the next thing, thank you for your time.
So will I be able to deliver this at the, uh, the hearing? Because we do request a hearing, and I was gonna talk about the perimeter of operations because no perimeter of operations has been established. Only one GPS coordinate has been submitted by the applicant. Yet as you see in the exhibits, it is a large facility that is already in play.
Thank you, Ms. Sinclair, we're gonna move on to our next item.
This is a matter of science, it will affect the water supply. And we do request a h- hearing, and I hope you can hear me at the hearing, it's very important.
Thank you for your time. Um, is there any member of the party that wants to combine these two issues and move them into, uh, one, uh, one, one matter?
It, it is one matter, and we will be combined at the hearing, yes, absolutely.
And this is Andrea La Cruz Crawford online, I just wanted to say we have no objection to consolidating these two matters.
Mr. V Hill?
We have no objection, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Uh, yes, please go ahead, Ms. Stanland.
Um, um, we are in agreement that this is one issue. Um, if we could ask for more than two hours if the two appeals are combined, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the board right now for any questions. Member Garcia?
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo. There's, let's see, I think we have a 60-day deadline to hold here after a petition. Is that correct, Counsel?
Yeah.
I just want to check so that when we set a date, we're within.
Yes, Board Member Garcia, the hearing shall be scheduled to begin no later than 60 days after the date the appeal petition was received.
Thank you. So we could potentially, considering this is probably a one-day hearing, we could potentially set this in. Or is that too soon?
Just comment that 60 days from today is Thanksgiving.
Right, but we would, we would definitely not. 60 days, we have to do before 60 days. So.
Oh, yeah.
So perhaps November 15th. Just throwing out some dates if anybody has any.
Madam Vice Chair, I want to note, the appeals were received on September 16th, because that was 30 days after the issuance of the permit date. So 60 days would be right around November 15th, was likely. Not around, but it would be the 15th or 16th.
Okay, so that, that would be cutting it pretty close if we do it November 15th. Anybody object to November 8th?
If it's helpful, our answer is do October 16th. And will, we will be on time or before.
And we have no objection to either November 8th or 15th from the point of the essay.
So I would move that we hold a hearing for the consolidation of EIB 24-49, and I'm sorry, EIB-24-51 and 52 consolidated into one hearing on November 8th.
Are we ready for a motion, or we still have other board questions?
Go ahead.
Make the motion.
I just want to make sure we don't have any other board follow-up questions? No, Mr. Bitzer? Member Honker? Remember, Chair Swin, oh, Member Honker? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I have a significant conflict on the 8th of November. I could do the 6th. But knowing that Chair Sweeney has already recused, I'm just trying to avoid forum problems. And if it's unavoidable, I will read the transcript of the hearing. So I'm fully informed before we deliberate.
So that puts us at the 15th? Oh, I'm sorry, the 6th.
So perhaps I'll throw out a motion, and then we can discuss it.
Yeah.
If it works, okay. So I would move that we consolidate EIB 24-51 and 24-52 into one hearing to be held on November 15th. I don't know if we need a hearing officer for this. And we would need to deliberate immediately after the hearing, obviously, because that's the 60-day deadline. Well, actually, to hold a hearing, not to make a decision. Okay, so we'll, we'll meet the 60-day deadline if we do it November 15th. So that's one.
I'll second.
Okay, there's no discussion. We can go ahead and take a vote on that. Before I do a roll call, Member Garcia, did you mention a hearing officer?
Perhaps that's something we should discuss before we make a vote. May I ask the parties, is this sufficiently contentious that it would need a hearing officer other than a member of the board? What is your opinion?
We do need a hearing officer. There is a multiple complex issues involved that need to come out. Yes.
I, I'm open either way. Are we, the department's open either way. I'll apologize. I stopped personalizing my responses. That, we do have, we do plan to file this positive motions. A hearing officer might be helpful, although Ms. Vidia is, you know, more than able of, they're not going to be super, you know, complicated, probably 12 v. 6 motions. So the department is open either way.
Likewise, Counsel for the essay is open to either situation. We do feel that if they're going to be, well, I, I think it's fine for the dispositive. So my understanding is that if there is not a hearing officer appointed, that the counsel for the board would help to rule on those dispositive motions. Is that correct? Madam Vice Chair, yeah, that would be correct. Okay. I, I don't have an objection either way. I suppose that, I think that the, the board with assistance of counsel could probably handle this, but if you feel it's in the best interest of everyone to appoint a examiner, that would be non-objectionable.
Okay, thank you very much. So I would amend my motion to say that we hold a hearing on November 15th and appoint a hearing officer to be determined at a later date, approved by the Chair or Vice Chair.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, we have a motion. Ready to go to a vote? Oh, go ahead.
Vice Chair, do we need to establish a time, like four hours? Or figure it out? A full day? Okay. If we get out early, that's great.
Okay, let's, Ms. Jones, if you wouldn't mind doing a roll call, vote for us. Member Bitzer, how do you vote on Member Garcia's motion?
I vote yes.
Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney has recused herself. Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all for your time. We appreciate it. Hey, well, that was a long hour, so we are going to take a quick bio break, and we will be back at 10:30. Is that enough for everybody? Great, thank you. Yes, I apologize. We were, got carried away there for a second. Okay, we are going to go ahead and go back on the record and I don't believe we have Chair Sweeney back, but we might not get her back here, so. For deliberation.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, okay, great. No, it's okay. Thank you for letting us know you there. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. The EIB matter 24-12 in the matter of the proposed repeal and replacement of 20.2.71 NMAC operating permit emission fees and 20.2.75 NMAC construction permit fees. This is a deliberation and possible decision. We, there is a possibility is to the board that we delay the deliberation on this particular topic. Part of that reason is we are changing, we will be changing legal counsel in the next week. Also, we don't have all of our members present, physically present, which we may like to do, because we will go item by item through the proposal. So I'm opening it up to the board for discussion on this. Your ideas, if you want to get into the deliberation and then just make the decision later, that is also an option. So, go ahead. And Madam Vice Chair, I just wanted to note that the board's rules, it's 20.1.1.406C NMAC, requires the board to reach a decision on a proposed rule change within 60 days of the date of the hearing officer's report. In this matter, the report was filed on August 30th. So that makes the deadline for a decision on these rules October 29th. So that being said, we can make it part of our next meeting to go ahead and deliberate and make a decision. So it's, I'm opening up for discussion here with board members.
And Vice Chair Trujillo, so you were suggesting that we go through each item in the rule? Is that what you meant by one item at a time and have a discussion about each piece of 71 and 75?
Yes, so previously, when we've done deliberation on an item like this, we have gone through the rule with each change that was proposed and then made a decision on that and moved on to the next. So that was my approach to the deliberation. If you wanted to try a different approach to it, that would be okay, too.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo. So I, I came prepared to deliberate today. I'm not opposed to doing it at another time. I'm sorry our counsel is going to be leaving us. It almost makes me say, well, then, all the more reason to do it today while we have knowledgeable counsel with us and a new person is going to have to come up to speed. These are, issues and regulations are often quite complicated. So, and as far as the process, I know that many times we do go item by item. In this particular case, I thought perhaps we could talk about the proposal by the department versus the proposal by the Mining Association, which is, which is really only one item different in their proposal. So that would make it fairly easy to look at that one item. So it's a kind of a yea or nay with that one item being different with the Mining Association proposal. So I'm, as I say, I, I'm prepared to deliberate today, but I'm, I'm not opposed to putting it off if necessary.
Member Bitzer? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chair Sweeney.
Yes, thank you all. Apologize, my camera's not working. I just wanted to make a comment or just provide some additional insight to Member Garcia's comments. So actually, I think our legal counsel's last day is today. And normally, how we've handled the process before is our legal counsel will write up our final order and everything for myself or Vice Chair to sign. So since today's her last day, I don't know logistically how that will work. So that was another thing just to consider in terms of just process. If we have a legal counsel that will be with us beyond today, then that, that follow-on task can happen. We can deliberate on record. We have the recording, and so that's a possibility. I'm not saying, no, it's just about deliberating today. It's just a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Member Bitzer, did you have a comment?
Unless counsel has already redrafted our, our options, you know, door number one, two, or three, it sounds to be like maybe we should postpone.
Thank you. Member, Member Honker?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't mind some additional time to prepare for it. I mean, I'm fairly well-prepared now, but I have some questions, and I may be able to dig out some more answers if we have another, another month to prepare for it. So I'd be in favor of postponing, you know, and then especially considering the legal counsel issue as well.
Thank you, Member Honker. Actually, that brings up another important point. We asked if the hearing officer, Mr. Virtue, could be present. If we had any questions, he cannot be here today, but he can be available next month. Member Bitzer?
I'll move then that we postpone this item till our next meeting.
I'll second that.
One moment, Member Honker. We're looking over dates here. I think actually, we, the 25th is past the 60 days. Oh, is it? Madam Vice Chair, yes, the deadline is October 29th. I would really ask that we could make it the 18th. Vice Chair, OPF isn't available on the 18th. There's a conflict.
And I won't be available on 18th. I won't be available until the 23rd of October. That's the earliest I could do it.
I could do the 23rd.
Vice Chair, I'm checking my schedule right now. I think I can do it. Give me a minute.
It's good for me, and I think that would, that would give our counsel, whoever that might be, a little, little bit more time to do any follow-up write-ups in advance of the deadline.
Vice Chair, the 23rd looks good for me.
Member Bitzer, 23rd? Okay, it looks like the 23rd looks good for everybody. Yeah, and Mr. Virtue? Yeah. I will confirm with him, but he'll, he can be available. Okay. And he's certain he's available through October. Are there any other restrictions with that date? No? Okay, great. Thank you, Pam.
I'll probably be telecommuting on that. So I have an all-day event down in Albuquerque. I can, I can get on. I just have to physically be present.
Okay, uh, you want to make a motion? Okay. Oh. Did you finish your motion?
I move that we, uh, uh, postpone this agenda item till October 23rd. And that we have, uh, we need Mr. Najjar and, and that. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Virtue. My lobbyist. Um, they were partners. Um, anyway, yeah, I just move we, we postpone this meeting until the 23rd of October. With this agenda item, till the 23rd of October, meeting.
Just, just a question, uh, while we consider that motion. So would we ma- move our monthly meeting to the 23rd and just, uh, do it as part of regular business or would this be a special meeting?
Uh, we can make it as part of our regular monthly meeting.
And I, I, I would amend Member Bitzer's motion to say we, we do, we postpone this agenda item uh, until our, our October meeting, which we would schedule for October 23rd.
Since I'm withdrawing my motion, I'll second his.
Uh, thank you, Member Bitzer and Member Honker. Um, unless there's any further discussion, we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote on that.
Okay, a, a vote on Member Honker's motion. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
You and Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, um, moving on to the next item, we removed, uh, the litigation update. So, uh, next meeting, which we established will be October 23rd. And, um, are there any upcoming matters? Okay, um, then we can adjourn.
I'll make motion that we adjourn.
Second. Okay. Ms. Jones?
Member Bitzer, your vote?
I vote yes.
And Member Ely?
Yes.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Were adjourned.
And Ms. Padilla, thank you for your assistance.
Uh, thank you, Member Honker. I really am disappointed to have to leave the board. I appreciated, uh, working for you and I appreciate the work that you do. And I'll be briefing, uh, my office on, um, uh, this matter. In fact, I'm going over there right now and so we'll, um, let them know that, um, what the, what the board's needs are for the next couple of months.
Thank you all. Have a good day.